Now Scott was here, he'd probably fight you for it for being the first one of the year. But since we have the queen of the universe, is that what?
That's right.
Does it make me laugh at your last name?
What, Queen, oh, you're an elephant, Queen Beth.
Queen Beth.
No, that's what Scott called me.
You've been called worse though.
Well. Yeah, I've been called worse, yeah.
Queen Elizabeth, so famous.
Yes.
Okay. Did you wanna try one? They're different, they're a little different. Not really, okay. I made them.
No, Bill did.
Bill made them.
There's also some cashews in there too, cause I do both, but I added just a pinch of cayenne. That's what makes them a little bit different.
Okay, so we got through twenty twenty four.
We did, we did, we got through it. Certainly busy at the end, of course, but.
Been a lot of rescue, been a lot of rescue calls in the last week.
Yeah, there has, yeah, and we've actually got a really good response from our volunteers too, which is always nice. We got a nice corps that does a good job and makes themselves available for especially the more serious calls, which is always, always nice to have. Yeah, it kinda broke down the last three years, if you look at the sheet, that just has the, it's just half full here. You got total calls, total arrests, traffic stops in there, tickets, medical calls, again, pretty steady. And then I also made a category, just motor vehicle crash, kinda cars off the road, and you can see that number, how many we actually deal with.
Man, I'm so confused. This says excessive speed nine, does that mean there's only been nine in twenty twenty one?
Those are the only ones that caught.
So this is the arrest, the longer sheet, the full sheet is arrest, those are arrests.
Oh, this sheet, that just has the nine on it, that's arrest.
Excessive speed, the criminal violation of excessive speed is thirty miles per hour.
Over.
Speed limit, yeah.
Over, thirty.
Yeah.
Alright, great, this is good. Oh, you know what I noticed, cause it was bothering Julie regularly, that somebody needs to be assigned to clean the battery chargers, the solar charger.
I should get some baby guns and do a good job on it.
Just the solar charger needed to, also that one, that one where I did have an incident with somebody going incredibly fast on Old Town Road, I couldn't believe it. But I went about a week ago on Old Town Road, and it went eighty-nine, one fifty-three, six fifty-four.
Didn't know who you were.
Something wrong with that one.
Yeah, no, this time of year, you'll see them.
Glitch?
No, it just doesn't, no, as far as the glitches, I'm not sure.
And it depends if the sun, if the sun isn't really out.
If there's less sun, the batteries aren't getting fully charged, the whole thing.
Yeah, well, I turned, I turned and I could see, it had snow on it, so like, I mean, I didn't stop and do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody needs.
You were going too fast to come up.
Well, that's like, the road, the excessive speed, like, it's going up, do you think that's cause our roads are in such good condition?
You know, I'm not sure what it is, you know, cause we have, you know, generally the same amount of traffic stops each year, pretty consistently.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we had a big year in twenty-two, but I don't know, we just happen to be in the right place at the right time, you get a lot of them out there on eleven and thirty.
Derek, I do have a question for you, so I do like how you have the motor vehicle crash, cars off the road.
Yeah.
Do you have the statistic on how many of those ended up being your DUIs?
I can get that for you, I don't have it off the top of my head.
I was just curious.
Well, we had, we had at least two today, and I don't think that those were DUIs, it was just slippery roads.
Oh, they were not DUIs?
No, I assume.
Generally, like, on average, though, I can kinda give you an idea, is three to five. Three to five of the crashes are DUI crashes, and the rest of the DUIs are typically traffic stops.
Well, cause I know you had that one around Lower Taylor a couple of weeks ago, and then, so, I just, just out of curiosity, I was wondering.
Yeah, it's typically three to five, there was, I mean, if I looked, if you look at the twenty twenty numbers statewide, it actually got to a point because we were hands-off and we were trying to limit contacts and traffic stops.
Unless they really screwed up, you weren't stopping.
Right, so there, you actually had more DUI crashes than you did proactive DUI arrests from traffic.
Well, they were self-medicating.
Hey, on the, on the, on the police website, are you guys, are you guys taking a photo or something, Felissa?
We're working on it, yeah.
Okay. Trevor also has to do that, so to get a, stand in front of a truck and take a photo. That's a good thing, though, I think showing the people makes sense, I think, I think, maybe not for police, maybe you have to be incognito.
I think we have such nice equipment.
Yeah, yeah, standing out in front of a truck or two or three.
Share those with the window reason for the Village Center designation, we, he wants us to take photos also, and I'm wondering if we should use the ones that you're going to take for the website.
Oh, you mean use the website photos for the Village Center?
Yeah, and submit those with our application, we can do it separately, but now I'm thinking maybe.
Well, let's see what gets, maybe.
We just gotta get them to a fairly soon, cause I was tardy, I didn't get them to it till this year.
No, but you did, you said you got, didn't you just?
I, I.
Oh, that was the town report thing, that's totally.
Is that what you meant?
I'm saying we have to get them because, and I was behind the mark too, like usual.
Oh, I don't have any photos, I don't have suggestions, that's all, okay.
Okay.
And then you asked about knock boxes last time, I just grabbed the numbers before it came in.
Yep.
We have eighteen active, and we have thirty-seven others that have been ordered within the town that have not been activated yet.
Okay, so we're gaining.
And we saw an inquiry, but I think you answered it, did you, saying those knock boxes don't work?
It was hooked over the top of the door, right.
Yeah, you did a great answering that.
If, if I, if I get the emails, I'll answer them, I, I push this ordinance, so I'll.
Yeah, we still get plenty of them, but they're usually easy.
Yeah, I activated two this weekend, or this last few days, and just, and then one woman said, wow, I'm gonna invest in a company that sounds like, and I said, it's a technology, I said, it's not, they said, I'm sorry, but, I said, then I tried to explain it to her that it's very. Well, and it's, and it's got a very heavy-duty tracking system, what's auditing system, what's the right word for?
Whatever you wanna call it.
Account, there you go, accountability.
Yeah, however you wanna call it.
Right, so nobody's just, it's not like a realtor box that everybody could open.
Well, I actually showed it to a couple of fire officers from New York, from Long Island, et cetera, and they have them, and they just have a key in their pocket, because it sets the alarm, those are hooked directly to that alarm system for the commercial buildings, and I said, well, we're doing one that is different. I took them out and showed them, oh, that's pretty noisy, says, and.
Well, the accountability part is the best part, yeah, and that should make the homeowner feel better too, because it said, you know, there's a record of who did what.
Right, and who opened, and who took the key fob out of the car to open it, and how long it was out, et cetera, so, yeah. Okay, good, alright, so we're gaining, it's gonna take a while, we had a working fire today upon Braziers Way, we mutually, we strattoned, it's real close to us, but.
Braziers Way?
Yeah, it, we were very lucky, a dehumidifier in the basement caught on fire, they say you don't run a dehumidifier in the winter, they get too hot and they catch on fire, this is not an uncommon thing, according to some people in the know. Well, no, you don't normally have to, cause you got heat, so that dries things out, but they probably have a little bit of a wet basement, and, but it caught on fire, and the guy went in, he said, well, I can see the smoke cloud here, so I just ducked down and went in and said, wow, you were lucky.
Yeah.
Then I told him about the two people that just died in a fire, and that kinda opens his eyes a little bit, but they made it out.
Do you have anything else to say?
Yeah.
Thank you for your service.
So you're up to full strength?
Yeah, just DJ goes, beginning in February, passed his PT test entrance exam, so he's all ready to go.
Okay.
So we'll be, you know, he's, he's actually working right now, he's on the schedule and working, he's got his level two certification, so, but then we'll be down one when he goes to the academy till May, and be ready to go.
Awesome.
Good, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
It looks like we could get some nasty weather tonight.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yeah, that's the other thing, we gotta.
Six, six to eight inches possibly.
Oh, and it turns.
On top of this.
On top of this? Oh, wow.
I heard that coming in, I'm like, we gotta get through this meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, but we do, you have a long drive.
I would love to get home.
Well, let's go right through it, alright, Public Safety Facility Design Project, we got a, a readback of this information.
We're living there, we got for it, yeah.
Two.
I don't think there's anything we have to do with it.
Do we need to do anything? They don't need us to meet with them, they're just gonna be reviewing the site, correct?
Right, that next meeting, they haven't quite decided date yet, but then they said they didn't need people from town there, they were just.
They're just assessing, that's what we're.
They're gonna have a structural engineer and all that stuff in there to do that, but.
That'll be interesting to hear.
Alright, so, ARPA Housing and Grants, we don't have anything that's in the agenda, we're already.
Well, the housing, you're forming a committee.
We have a committee, yes.
You have, so they have to like come, also you, you have to keep minutes, they don't, they're gonna have to, they don't have to, they have to keep minutes, but they don't have to record, do they?
I, I'll have to go back and read.
They should have minutes at the basement.
Well, they definitely have to have minutes, and they have to be provided to, the minutes have to get recorded.
And it's five days to work.
Five days to work, yeah.
Right, and the minutes have to get recorded.
Within five days, everything has to be recorded, yeah.
And the land records.
But the recording thing.
The recording thing, you mean the, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I'm not sure, I thought there was even, I wasn't even sure, I know you just mentioned it recently, that you requested to make sure that Gnat was showing, because of the, that, I thought that requir, I'm not, I'm not sure, I guess I'd have to look, maybe, or you wanna look, maybe?
I did, I have gone back and forth with the VCT.
Oh, and it is a requirement for us?
It is a requirement, it says state bodies, not until after January first, but town bodies were supposed to start June first, recording and making the recordings available. So I just linked to the Gnat website on our website, which technically isn't storing the files, the video content on our servers, or it's our desk server.
Well, no, as long as it's there, there's a link.
Think that that's sufficient?
Yeah, I think that's okay, but I'm just wondering, cause I remember when I first read through it, I thought that it only applied at the state level, and that it didn't apply to the towns, but.
I was pretty sure, I'll have to go back.
Please look, just please review it again.
We've got two lawyers here, there're gonna be disagreements, right?
Oh, and you know what, Julie won't be at our next meeting.
I will not be at the next meeting.
So that it's just on her, she's, she's got work.
Yes.
Alright, so I guess that's a perfect time for Paul to walk in on a new business, you have something for us, sir?
No.
Oh, okay, great.
Alright, well, it's, it's just, it just so happens that new business is, is right now, and if you had something you wanna.
He doesn't know, he, you're just, you're just sitting observing and, and watching, which is great.
I just have an access permit.
You do, okay.
Whenever you wanna put that in.
Go for it.
Hey, great.
Do you live in Wind Hall now, Paul, or do you plan on it with the new property?
You know, it's a good question.
Okay, I'll let you work that out with your bride.
So I have Pudo LLC, which you guys talked about last meeting, it is Sly Street, S-L-Y.
Oh, that's X, right.
Oh, Sly Street.
So Trevor has.
Oh, I, I thought he said Sigh.
It's Sly.
Oh, I thought you said Slade for some reason.
Well, Sigh Slade.
Right.
Well, I was a slow fish.
Yes, so it does not.
Why?
Yeah, it does not need a culvert, we are not assigning nine-one-one numbers right now until Paul gets his layout,
Buildings built, yeah.
And then we'll assign numbers, cause Scott needs to use the new.
So you have something we need to actually?
Yes, I need to assign that.
Well, we'll have to look this over before this.
Yeah, I don't know, this is a little sketchy.
For this, for this character.
Oh, look, it has a sketch with it, see how sketchy it is?
Yeah, sketchy, oh boy.
Okay, so is there, you wanna say that?
Sure.
Motion?
And you have to call the, on your, on your call, okay.
So this is, this is a access right-of-way permit, and has Trevor.
Did Trevor sign that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, no culvert needed.
So I move to authorize the access permit for Sigh Road.
Sly.
Sly. Well, I'll authorize them both, not Sly Road, is it road or lane?
Street.
Streets?
Street.
Sly Street, I thought streets have to, did you ask Scott that?
Scott's okay with this.
Okay, cause I thought streets had to connect to another street, and otherwise I thought it was a lane.
No.
Okay.
He's all good with it.
He's the man.
We gave him three names, and then this is the final name.
You know what, I'm okay, and if he wants to change it to Lane, that's our name.
I'm seconding it.
And second it, is there any more discussion?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
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 So can we sign it on the very bottom as final?
No, cause it's not in yet.
It's not, no, there's.
It's just marked.
It, which is, this is just the nine-one-one address, right?
Just the street.
He has an assignment.
Street name, just the street name.
The street name and the location.
Street name, street name.
Anything else you wanna?
Julie.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's a bad, you have a fan.
So, yeah, cool.
Take that and do your thing there, Elizabeth.
I will, thank you, William, I appreciate that.
There you go, that's good.
I was looking for something to add.
So keep you busy.
We have no liquor tonight. I know, I thought so.
Should've all had liquor tonight, that would've helped.
Okay.
Julie?
I'm just looking at it.
No, it's okay.
Well, no, give that to Beth.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
There you go.
Alright, so budgeting, do we have any other problems with budgeting, or are we?
If it's good, it's.
Yeah, we saw it last.
Yeah.
If you have, it was just, I put it on there one more time, just cause there's still a little time, but if you're good to go, I would let it.
I mean, I think, we, we have everything covered, don't we?
Well, it's finalized, but you're not sending it to print yet anyway, right?
No, but I do have a deadline, so I need to.
Because you have to wait for the articles?
Yes.
But that's the sixteenth.
That's the sixteenth.
Right, so, cause the, yeah, cause there's a lot more coming on.
But if we have to amend that, then it's a lot of work on my part, if I put it in the draft and then have to go back and change it, so if that's good to go, I'll just, I'll just put it in just like that.
Okay, alright, I, I think we got it covered, or you guys, I think, yeah, okay.
Listen, it's okay, what's town meeting?
Did you find out about the, um, printing?
Oh, the inside color?
They, they have agreed, I approached Repro, and they have agreed to do this this one time in the, in color in the front for us.
With the front?
In the front, inside, okay.
On the inside, oh, so that's what you want, good, okay, good, that's what we want.
And that's for Marcel.
For Marcel.
Do you want it two different pictures?
And I do think that the.
I'm asking Sharon for anything extra that she may have, that she may wanna include, that I didn't, that I didn't remember, maybe that he did before I was born even.
You know, those, well, there's, it, it, I have it actually sitting on my dresser, his, his remembrance, his remembrance book has not only a lot of pictures in it, not that you wanna take it from there, but, I mean, the cover one is what we're using on the front, I think, right? Same, same picture that's on the cover, I think it is, but a lot of those little blurbs, even the, the first one, that's his, his own remembrance with his own little phrase at the end, I kinda like, I kinda like that.
That's very good.
I like that one with his own little, this is what, yeah, I mean, it, it really sums up, and the ones in the back were also pretty good about summing up the essence of, you know, Marcel, so, and then, Jacqueline said she's gonna write my eulogy.
She's planning it for next week.
I think she's starting, I think she's starting.
She's planning it for next week.
She's starting already, that's right, if I don't get up my hill.
She, she said she's got a deadline, she's trying to get it in.
It might happen sooner than you think, my hills are nuts tonight.
So, town meeting, we're having it at the school, is that correct?
Yeah.
We're all set with that?
March fourth, is it, something like that? March fourth? First Tuesday in March is March fourth, I think it's March fourth, it's a command.
Try March seventh.
March fourth, first Tuesday.
Okay.
March fourth, does this look so weird? Oh, this, this, this map does it much different than the other one, but that's okay.
Well.
It's okay, it's nice to have the thing.
So we're all set with that at this time, unless there are other, things that come in, and what's the deadline for those?
January sixteenth.
January sixteenth, okay. Alright, good correspondence.
Uh, the, the only thing on the correspondence is sort of this short-term rental thing, which I, when I saw that they were getting forwarded, I was replying to those, I wanna try to keep you and Beth.
I'm getting them.
You're getting them too?
Yeah.
Are you answering them?
Uh, uh, when they call me up, yes, I am.
When they call you?
And then it's okay, because it's not overwhelming yet.
Alright, well, I was just saying, cause I mean, the ordinance itself says not to bother the three of you, and until we have the short-term rental administrator in place, I think, you know, I was, I suggested, since I rewrote the thing.
You helped, yeah.
Yeah, like Stuart's taking the heat on the lock boxes, I can take the heat on the short-term rent, a lot of the questions are, they, they didn't even read the, I mean, I answered a few.
Some of the clarifications.
They, they hadn't even, they hadn't even read it, you know, we didn't get an application for a short-term rental administrator, or, or back, I told them, we don't, we don't have it yet, you know, it's not in place, he's certain when we put out an RFP for it.
Well, you know, right now it's not overwhelming, and I shouldn't clear up like that.
Okay, you could just say bill@windhall.org.
Hey, when do you think we'll start talking about the job description?
Well, so we had, the job description.
Marcel, I know, did it.
No, well, the planning commission did it, and the description they had was, I do not, I do not think it was accurate for what we need. It also was a sixty-five thousand dollar a year full-time position, that is not what we're doing.
Twenty-four, twenty-three hours a week?
Twenty-three hours, which should be enough, and, uh, so the seventeenth is the last day that a petition could come in.
Of January?
Yeah, it's the last day that it.
So just about.
I don't think we're gonna get a petition on this, I mean, you have to get forty-one people, give or take, in town.
But they have to be voting citizens.
And they have, yeah, and they have to be in town, so this will be forty-one, I think we will get a petition, I don't know if you were, but, Mike Cole had put out feelers about increasing the board to five, and I think that he probably will get that petition in, because that's easier, and he's the head of the Democratic Committee, so, you know, it's probably sixty Democrats in town, there's more Democrats in towns than Republicans, from what I recall.
So, one thing you should know, I've had a few calls about STR, where is the application?
Well, it's not instituted, that's right.
Right, it's in process, cause we don't have the ordinance yet, if for some reason that there is a petition, then there is no ordinance until another special meeting.
Well, I said, all I said was it's in process.
Right.
It will be posted online when it is ready.
That's the short-term rental application for, for applying for a license, which we also need, so we need the application, we need a license form, there's a few documentations, like, some of which you have already, like that good neighbors list, which is included.
And what about the?
And then we need the RFP for that.
What about when does GovOS step in?
And then that's another question, they'll start once we're, they won't start till we're official, cause they can't.
Right.
But I wondered, I mean, you've dealt with them more than anyone else, I just, you know, it's just.
No, Marcel did, I.
Well, okay, but you.
I dealt with them in Facebook, right?
Okay, I'm just, I'm just wondering, I mean, I guess it's, maybe it's some proprietary software package or something, I just have a little trouble conceptually understanding how do they actually determine that there's a short-term rental in town that doesn't have a license?
Well, the way he explained it was, it's AI that is going through these hundreds of different.
Yeah, all, everything, yes, Airbnb, everything, yeah.
But there's also like things that pop up in different social media platforms.
Right, all of that stuff is what, that's what I understood too, but it just still seems like.
Right, well, that's how it was explained to me, they said, uh, GovOS said to me on a number of times, they will have no trouble identifying.
Okay, great, I mean, they've been doing it at Killington for, since twenty twenty.
I think they, I think they go through and, and they look for, we, we wanna rent a place such and such, and say, oh, here's the hive flag.
They have all the software.
And I guess we can wait on it, I'm just also doing logistically, so then they reach out to the short-term rental administrator and say,
Right.
hey, this, these, here's some we found that don't have licenses?
I don't think they can check to see if they have licenses.
I mean, for one thing, once it's official, we need to send, the short-term rental administrator with Lisa's help and Beth's probably, or whoever does, I think we should send a mailing.
What, about the position?
No, no, about the, about the ordinance, once it's officially passed.
Well, it's in the ordinance.
Yeah, what is?
Well, the voucher licensing and so on.
Oh, yeah, the licensing, there's just not a form, there's just not a, there's not a license form itself yet, and there's not an app, everything that you need to put in your application, all the requirements are in the ordinance, so.
And then we can just have them online, is that possible to have an online form that can be submitted?
Hopefully, well, I think GovOS.
Or, or you could at least have one they could print.
Yeah, they can print it out for that, they have to gather, it's a lot.
If it's not available.
I'm not sure.
Also, the, it wouldn't work that way, because the form has a lot of attachments.
Correct, that, that's what I'm saying, but they could, they would be available.
They could print out, like, it'll be a check, like, checks, checks, it's basically in the ordinance, you read it a few times. The ordinance says you need this, 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 and this, and this is the proof that you need to get through the number of bedrooms.
Well, I assume the application will be online, they can print it out.
Well, that's what we just.
That's what we just figured out, okay.
Yeah, but they're, you know, and they have to send their fee in as well, it doesn't say where the fee goes to, and.
Alright, so, we're, we're getting closer, but we're still in the waiting.
At some point, I'll probably sit down with you and do these four or five documents.
Yeah, okay.
We're, so we're still in the waiting period, so there's nothing we can do at that point, other than get those things ready for when, when you're caught up, because you're a little.
Yeah, well, we're not.
February second is the day that it would become effective if we.
Yes, I have that in my calendar.
Okay, so.
Seventeenth and the second, yeah.
We still have a month.
Yes, and then, and then we gave people until September, I believe, the end, or August thirty-first, to comply, so that it wasn't unfair with some people in compliance and some people's, you know, renting to twelve people when they really can only rent to six. So, I, I mean, we took that to heart.
So we had somebody ran in and, and sent an email that said, oh, this is unfair, because I could rent it for, for twelve people, and somebody else could say they could rent it.
Right. Right, so we, so I pushed the, the actual date of the effective day, the, the effective day of the ordinance is one thing, the effective licensing date is August thirty-first or September first, I think it's August thirty-first.
So they have time to get.
Yeah, so that is, everybody, you can get your paperwork all in, yeah.
Have you heard about, you, are you familiar with the short-term rental thing?
So familiar.
There you go.
I'm sure, I'm sure you are, so, so have you looked at ours?
I think it's wonderful, Chrissy and I talk about it extensively, is this a good?
Yeah, great.
I wasn't intending to comment on this.
No, you can say whatever you want.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
You're done.
My only recommendation would be to contact when Bill, you made a suggestion, you probably send out letters to all grand list people, right?
Yeah, it has to go to the whole grand list, cause most of the people are actually not taxpayers that are doing the short-term rentals.
Well, they are taxpayers.
I'm sorry, they're not residents, they're not voting residents, sorry.
They're not voting residents.
So they won't be, well, there might be a few.
There are some.
No showing up at your meeting.
We've had people.
The, I would suggest that besides VRVO, which is the database, we're very familiar with, we get out of short-term rentals as an organization.
Oh, you did, that's good for you.
But I would highly recommend reaching out to the organizations that do the short-term rentals and manage them, because what's gonna happen is the homeowner is just gonna forward your email or your letter.
Yeah, they'll, that's gonna be their responsibility though, cause they, they have to, part of it is that they have to tell us who's, who's their caretaker, we, you know.
They're gonna put it on them.
Yeah, it's all, it's all on, it's all, yeah.
It's a fee opportunity for the rental manager to deal with it. And.
That's true.
So you've got Strat, I mean, just thinking out loud, Megan and Rob.
Yeah, they talked to me already, yeah.
Stratton Corporation, cause you go all the way up to the Chapel of the Snows, and you've probably got fifty short-term rentals up to there.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm blowing up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, the rental manager I would go to, the other thing, we just had a fire in Okemo that was in a five-bedroom condo, eighteen people there.
Oh, I've heard about that. Yes.
And we've been a proponent of.
Was that that big one, that they had a few weeks ago? Is that that big one, that they had a few weeks ago?
Control, as the property manager, they wouldn't, the board was very, the association was very.
Ludlow has no short term rental ordinance.
No, they're not as organized.
Okay, well, I mean, Killington's had it since twenty twenty, and it's crystal clear, you know.
It's a good one, yeah, um, but the other thing is occupancy, and I think the state fire marshal will start to come down on.
Well, we have occupancy requirements in our ordinance, and we have a requirement, one of our applications is the fire marshal report.
Right, so I think.
So, I mean, we're trying to cover, that was a main, we had a few main issues, which was, uh. You know, trying not to disturb your neighbors in the neighborhood, because we've had issues, even things like leaving garbage out, you know, and the bears get it all, you, you live, live, they, long enough your whole life. And, and, and then the other one was really occupancy, people renting, you know, it's licensed, the septic licenses for a three bedroom house. And they're listing it as, you know, sleeps twelve.
People.
Yeah.
So the driver of it is what we've experienced, and I'm, I'm a big proponent of this, the fire department took forty-five minutes to get to this fire, which wasn't on. Wasn't a reasonable.
Quite a, quite a distance to it, from what I remember.
And we're limited on water supply up there, because every time the development got a permit, the fire chief changed what was a requirement. One year it was a check, one year it was a fire truck, and this year it was nothing.
They didn't have them install hydrants.
Right, and there was, the last phase fell under Act two fifty and did, so what's driving it is sprinklers and occupancy.
Yeah.
And somewhere in the Vermont code is a language that says if it's eight or more or nine or more people, it's considered a boarding house.
Right.
Yeah.
And therefore it requires sprinklers.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, better breakfast.
Two units, it requires sprinklers, and if it's more than four or fours.
Well, we only, oh, one to two units, meaning like a condo.
Well.
Cause we are, cause on our, we're only allowing one unit on a property, unless it's a condo, but on, on an individual property. You could have, you can't Airbnb both your, both your structures, we're talking, it's one only.
Right.
Well, I thought you could, but it cost you more.
No.
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 Unless you're in commercial zone.
Well, that's a whole different thing, then it's not even.
But the sprinkler thing is an interesting topic, because.
Yeah.
Uh, at this particular property, it's four units, four stories, four to five bedrooms each, not sprinkled.
Not sprinkler.
And without sufficient water for a sprinkler.
So most of the units in Winhall, I might be mistaken, but I think the Airbnb units that are in Win, Stratton. Is the condos and the homeowners associations, and some of them have, like Village Watch has sprinkler systems in it. I think that most in Winhall are houses. I don't think we have.
Uh, no, we have Piper Ridge.
Oh, Piper Ridge, are people Airbnb, Piper Ridge's?
Uh, all a little bit.
I don't know, oh, I didn't know Inter Milton.
Inter, Piper Ridge.
So our requirement there is that, we do have a requirement that they get approval of from the HOA.
Where I'm pointing out is you're forcing the hand of a fire, I, I'm not opposed to this, but you're forcing the issue of the state fire marshal to come in and say. If you're renting for more than a people.
Well, if they have to put it, if they have, whatever the fire marshal comes up with, yeah, if it says.
I know, I'm just pointing it out.
Yeah.
And then they'll say, it's really down to what the local fire chief wants.
Oh, that's what the marshal says?
In the rural fire code, it says, it's the final say of the rural fire chief.
So it would.
Well, let's see, yeah, well, let's see where it comes out, I was anticipating mostly that, uh, you know, the fire safety would go through, and we'd get a report that says occupancy granted.
We do.
You know, okay.
I mean, potentially, I mean, it wouldn't just be a blatant thing, there'd be much discussion about it, but, yeah, but we'll see. It's, it's a learning process, we, it's.
It's great, it's great, and, and values, by the way, I think go up when you impose. Uh, code requirements and, and sort of a more professional way about doing it.
We've had positive feedback when we were talking about doing the short term rental orders from short term rental owners. And people that manage other short term rentals, we had positive feedback, like, we're, we're all for this, we wanna know what the rules are, and the Vermont Short Term Rental Association. That Vitstar.
I know, yeah.
They are in favor of having, you know, reasonable network, uh, so I, I think we're on the right track, we'll, we'll see what happens.
I'm not gonna ask you to pass to do this.
It's what?
As I heard, it's a, but to put an option tax that might.
Well, we have an option tax, yeah.
You get sixty-six cents on a dollar on that.
Well, in theory, we're getting that now, from the rentals.
Yeah, supposedly.
We're supposed to be.
Okay, now, have you heard about the Knox box thing?
I would just assume you're putting them on every short term rental.
No, no, that's on anything that has a.
Anyone who has a automatic fire line. You don't need to put it on a house that, that doesn't have an automatic fire line. You can elect to put it on, so if someone has a medical issue, they can get into the system just by buying the box and being in the system, but this is so that.
Police, fire, rescue has.
Fire and rescue can get in.
And it, it registers and tracks it, whoever came in and came out.
Electronic one, though, this is.
It's not just a little, like, wheelchair.
And the box will have the caretaker information, so if there is an issue, there will be somebody local that can be.
We had some, we had some pushback, because it's five hundred bucks for the cheapest one, but it's, it's electronic, so it's, it's, has a very. Uh, heavy duty auditing system for it, so anytime I take the key out of the cruiser, it says, I've taken the key out. There's one in each police cruiser, and there's one, two others in fire trucks.
It should be, it should be good.
Sounds good.
So anyways, thank you, alright.
Yeah, no, let's, we'll see where the short term renting goes, we, like I said, we still have.
So you had some info on website, you said you're getting closer on that?
We're, I'm working, working on it, yes.
Okay.
Once we get some photos, I think it'll make it look a lot nicer.
We have, we have a, a different link we have to have you put up for the fire department, because what, right now it just goes to winhall.org, and it just says. Winhall Fire Department, we have.
You have your own page on there that I can then, from there, put a picture and then just link it to your website.
Okay, so we'll, we'll, I will get that information.
Jackie just let me know that the cloud was there, yay.
Alright, good, so we're gaining there.
Yeah, it's low, but we're getting there, we're getting there.
I didn't, I didn't think this was going to follow onto you, I, I thought it was going to be more of.
Yeah, I think we all were under that impression.
I did, I did let them know, though, it was a lot more work to be thought on our end.
So here is twenty twenty-four equalization study results.
Oh, yeah, it does sound wonderful.
So, common level of appraisement, we're fifty-eight point nine four percent.
Holy, I know, it's really bad.
And we're, we're supposed to be ninety or better?
No, anything over eighty, eighty, can't go below eighty. But we're, is we're in process?
A, or we're in the process?
Yeah, is that asking for anything, they're, they're doing it?
I don't know, I'm, I'm, I think it's just telling us what we have.
I had somebody, um, send, I had some.
Fifty-eight point nine four percent.
Reach out, asking how people can go to the portal, the portal has a thing, but it needs a passcode, and I wrote back, I believe, I said. Reach out to the listeners, here's their phone number, I said, I believe that once you get your notice that said they're doing your house. You'll then have access to that portal for your report, isn't that, that is how.
I don't know that, we don't, no, we don't know, but they.
Because the portal is up on our site, but there's no way to access it.
Start in September?
Yeah, they started down at the end.
The last half lot, which is down at Tollgate.
Yeah, they've been going this way.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Oh, so you're not aware how that portal works, yeah, I think that's how the portal works.
I don't even know anything about it.
Okay.
The number passcode on the portal.
And I believe that Nemrick gives that to you when they, or Doug will send it out to, but I think Nemrick, I think the letter that Doug's, I thought. I said, I think, called Doug, said, I think the letter that goes out says, we're coming to your house, we need access. And here's, you know, your account, but maybe it doesn't, maybe it doesn't till they're done.